Please rise for the pleasure.
I'm going to go with Michael's mic, Bob.
That's great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda adjustments, I'll just let you know the meeting is being videotaped. We do have an agenda adjustment under item 10, under unfinished business, 10A1, approval for new policies. We'll only be voting on four new policies tonight, the BEDG minutes, the EFD male charge policy, ID school day, ILD student submission to educational surveys and research. The other new policies will be on future agendas. Any public comments? No? Okay. Can I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes? Oh, actually, I'm sorry. No? Yep. Pardon me. I can add motion. All right. Suspend regular meeting, open up a public. Motion made by Situit, seconded by Hanover. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I move that the South Shore Regional School District not participate in school choice program for the school year 2019-2020 because the school district has an established process for admitting students who reside outside the school district.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry. Any discussion? All right. Thank you. I entertain a motion to close public hearing and return back to our regular meeting.
Motion second.
Motion made by Hanover, seconded by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We're back in our regular meeting. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So.
Motion made by Situit.
I'll second.
Seconded by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Student of the Month. Sandy?
Chris abstained the minutes.
Okay.
Jim, you have one abstention, hundred minutes. And you vote on the school choice.
Good evening, committee, guests. It is my great pleasure to celebrate Zachariah Ruggasio tonight. I'll begin by thanking his parents for getting here this evening on such short notice. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And he has been on our minds for a long while. So I've been celebrating Zach for a little while, but I forgot to tell his parents until this morning. So thank you very much. So again, we're pleased to celebrate Zachariah from Situit. He is a member of the Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning and Refrigeration Program. And he has the proud parents, Aaron and Jeff Ruggasio. He is a Skills USA State Gold Medalist who plans to stay in his co-op placement at Anderson Fuel after graduation, but not before he attends the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky in June. All of the South Shore Tech educators really gushed as they contributed accolades for Zachariah. HBA instructor Mr. Mulcurran and Mr. Morrell stated that he consistently performs at a high level. He is responsible. He can be relied upon for important tasks, often assisting his instructors in helping to train other students. His academic teachers, Mrs. Bateman and Ms. Matthews, all complimented Zachariah as insightful, creative, problem-solving, witty, motivated, and a man of honor. And his word, adding that he's a leader and a cheerleader when working with his peers. He keeps his groups on task and focusing and focused and keeps everyone organized on their individual tasks. In addition, his positive contributions to his trade and his academic program of study, Zachariah is a standout member of the South Shore Tech Drama Club. Mr. Bova, Mr. Savage, and Mrs. Keith report that Zach has been an amazing stage manager, winning the first ever South Shore Tech Stage Manager Award at this year's METG competition. And he can handle any wrinkle or technical difficulty with calm efficiency and solve any problem that he is given. He is tireless and the most can-do of any stage manager they've ever had. Please join us in celebrating Zachariah Ruggasio as South Shore Tech's May 2019 Student of the Month. Zachariah started a new trend by asking our student of the month to share with the committee a highlight of their experience as a student at South Shore. I'm going to give you the mic for a moment.
A highlight of being at South Shore was being able to find a shop, a trade that you can get invested into, one that you like, and pursuing it later in the future and having a job and career availability in the future.
Before I leave the podium, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to turn my attention to our great support of Cody Campbell, who is our student body representative to the school committee. So Cody, if you could come to the podium for just a minute? Just want to thank you for your well-planned, well-executed, always timely information about our school and our community. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and watch you grow here as a South Shore student. We're really excited to celebrate you as the outstanding vocational student at South Shore Tech. And I'm really looking forward to watching you blossom as you head off into your next adventure. So if you could just let the committee know what your next adventure is before you come back up to tell us what was going on here in May at school.
Well, I'll be heading off to Clarkson University in upstate New York and continuing my education in manufacturing, or sorry, mechanical engineering.
Good. Good job.
The kids are why we're here. Thank you for celebrating them.
Thank you. Staff recognition. Chris Albrecht.
They're not used to being in front of a camera. They're really... No, no, no.
No, no, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, you can stand behind us. You can be the pips to Gladys Knight over here, okay?
They got to do that.
I'm going to get this going for you. Okay? So, sorry. The social studies department's here tonight to talk to you about new electives they're doing and including the importance of civics within our program, which we all would agree as I get the head nods, very important in this day and age to understand not only larger government, but town government every way down. Okay? Let me slide over here.
There's a brief geography quiz. So...
Introduction.
The social studies department, we prepare today's students for the challenges of tomorrow's citizens by embedding civics initiatives into rigorous curriculum to create an informed electorate. That's really where we're concentrating our efforts on across all our classes, no matter if we're teaching US One to freshmen, or if we're teaching psychology even to juniors and seniors, or our new elective classes to the upperclassmen. We support the development of critical thinking through thoughtful analysis of the past and present, which really links with our mission at South Shore Technical. We want good critical thinkers in their shops, in their lives. We enhance student learning through the integration of technology and primary sources. In US history, this is, we have new changes next year for our standards are changing at the state level. We're working right now on adjusting our curriculum. It'll be a change from starting with colonial times going up to the Civil War. Now we're going all the way from a brief look at the Revolution all the way to World War I. It's a big change for us and an integration that we're working on right now. We'll be still concentrating on a close look at the Constitution and then moving on from there. In modern world, there will be an adjustment to modern world to accommodate the adjustment in US One. And we'll be looking again at US in world affairs and focusing on global being local and local being global and the interaction in between those two roles of government. Our electives, which is what we'll be looking at closer, these are the ones we've been developing since last year and really refining and looking at. Psychology is an existing elective that we offer to juniors and seniors. It takes kids through a basic understanding of human behavior, looks at Freud, neo-Freudian, behaviorist, humanist, existential schools of thought, lots of class discussion, lots of looking at where your behavior comes from, how to interact in society, how to be, you know, adjusted. Modern American history developed by Mr. Davis. The purpose of this course is to examine events and trends from the last 70 years that have shaped our country. So what we don't want are students who graduate from our school and all their history stocked somewhere around World War II or Vietnam, and nobody knows what's happening in the present and can't relate things to the present day. The focus is looking at key people, movements, events, and innovation that define the individual decades as well as presidential administrations. We'll be making connections between past events and time periods and present-day American society, economy, and politics, and looking at historical underpinnings of current issues. And we use a lot of tools to do that, including a magazine that we present to the kids, and we're constantly linking all of us, the past to the present, the past to the present. What are the links? How does what we did 50 years ago impact what we're doing today? And what is what we're doing today going to happen, you know, what are we going to impact 50 years from now? Four more films developed by Mr. Chamberlain after taking a particularly great class that you can't stop talking about. Films from Italy, France, Britain, Spain, Germany, Mexico, El Salvador, Iran, and Palestine. Amazing to watch a classroom of kids sit and watch a movie that has subtitles and just be in awe of it and what they take away from that. It's really impressive. The content he's looking at, World War II, the Holocaust, Nazism, the Cold War, and terrorism. And then his concentration is on diversity, religious struggles, culture, internal conflicts, looking at different viewpoints and values that are different from our own. So really bringing in that global aspect of things, but bringing back around to the local. And finally, this is the class that I developed called Civics in Action. Again, it's to upperclassmen. Students are going to be examining political, social, and economic forces behind modern American protest movements through the lens of the Bill of Rights, and they're going to develop a plan of civic engagement that will positively impact their local communities in keeping with the mission of South Shore Technical High School. This has meshed nicely with a contest at Skills USA of community action projects. So every student or team of students in the class is going to be creating a community project. They're going to implement it, and at least one set of them will be going to Skills to present. So that's our goal. This is what we're going to change our little corner of the world.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll put them on the spot.
Very good. Thank you.
By the way, the person talking is Ms. Tammy Glass. She's the department head. She failed to mention herself. I think that was on purpose. I just want to, one little follow-up. You heard in all those presentations about all those courses linking past to present, linking what's going on today to what they're studying before. That's what happens in every class in this building. No matter if it's Tony Boyer in the English department, if it's the math relating to the vocational side of the house, we are about making this as realistic and as meaningful for our students every day when they're in a classroom. That's what we're about. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, student advisory. Cody?
So on April 24th, as you guys have heard, 40 students attended the Skills USA Massachusetts State Leadership Competition, and we were able to successfully bring home four bronze medals, two silver, and one gold. Amy Smalley received a bronze medal for telecommunication and cabling. Isabella Toll received a bronze medal for medical terminology. And Ashton Genoza and myself received bronze medals for additive manufacturing. Emily Ingram received a silver medal for graphic communication. And Liam Kernan received a silver medal for screen printing. And also, as you guys have heard tonight, Zachariah was able to place gold for A3C. Along with the medal winners, Elizabeth Hennessy was elected a national voting delegate and will become the first student from South Shore Technical's history to receive that position. And both Zachariah and Elizabeth will advance and attend the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Competition in Louisville, Kentucky on June 24th through the 28th. On May 5th, our SST Skills USA chapter held their second annual toucher truck event, and we were successfully able to raise over $600 that will go towards the national conference fees. And then this year's junior/senior prom will be held at Pond Country Club in Kingston on Friday, May 24th. The grand march will be held here at SST at 5:00 PM, and then the doors for our prom will be opened at 6:00 PM. And lastly, teams of students and staff will face off in a dodgeball tournament on May 30th to raise money for our student council.
It will be pictures of this, right?
I hope so. Do you guys have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, Cody, while you're at the microphone, you and Ashton competed in additive manufacturing, as you said, right? Could you explain to the committee what your project was? Because in this competition, you were given the challenge ahead of the competition, correct?
Yes.
So could you just take a little bit of time and explain what you and your partner had to develop? What was your challenge?
So just backstory, additive manufacturing is just a fancy word for 3D printing. And given that it takes some time to print out all the models for the competition, we are one of the few competitions that we receive what we have to do well in about three weeks in advance before attending the competition. And we have to have our models submitted to them by the week prior to the competition. This year, we actually had a make a device that could flip a coin, or more specifically a quarter, from heads to tails and be able to do it successfully three times without fail.
Can you just give a description of what did you end up developing? What did it look like?
So it really was just kind of like a spoon, but only the edge of it that would sit below the pedestal that the coin was on. And when you hit the, what would be the handle of the spoon, it would flip up and the coin would flip precisely one time and land back on from heads to tails. And then we were able to successfully do that three times in a row. And then at the competition, they actually gave us a redesign that we have to do. So the initial design, we had to make it so it landed back on the pedestal. And while we were there, we had to redesign it so that in theory, it would flip the coin and have it land in a little dish about three inches away from the pedestal. I say in theory because those models were not 3D printed and tested because of lack of time.
Yeah. Very good. I think that speaks to what Ms. Glass was saying earlier about critical thinking and what you heard about with Zachariah about troubleshooting. So well done. I wanted the committee to get a clearer sense of, it's complicated stuff.
Yes.
Well done.
I'd just like to thank you all for allowing me to be here as the student body rep. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cody.
Good job.
I should have said this earlier, but the last Rockland Selectments meeting, Cody was awarded, awarded Rockland for, it's called Rockland's Best, and for his achievements here, being the vocational student of the year. And Elizabeth Hennessy was also awarded at the last Selectments meeting for those achievements that you go into national delegates representing us down in Kentucky.
Nice. Good job, Cody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We'll move on to the reports. Treasury report, Bob? I mean, Jim? Sorry.
In your package, you have the Treasury report. This month's report has some pictures from Skills USA, from the state convention, pictures that were taken by some of the staff, as well as a picture from the credit for life that was at the gymnasium a little earlier in the year. So again, great achievements by the students for this year. First page, of course, is the financial position, cash balances overall. Right now, the overall operating cash balance is in still worth of $5.4 million. The OPEB reserve account down below is $664,000. So overall, again, strong cash position at this time of the year. So everything's in great shape. Income on the next page, our revenue through April 30th. We did receive $1.3 million this past month in local fees from our member towns. Again, as they were due, we bill them out in March, they do April 1st. Some towns paid a little early, but everybody at this point has paid 75% of their annual assessment. We'll be sending out the bills. We have sent out the bills for the final assessments that will be coming in shortly. So, and the other income down below, we have investment income, some miscellaneous income along the chapter 70, which again comes in every month, $361,000 in chapter 70 revenue. We'll be looking at our second installment of revenue from, you know, our regional transportation. We don't know that amount yet. Again, that debt will be released usually sometime the end of May 1st to June. Again, but we are projected to have more revenue in that account than we did from our budget of $409,000. So we'll be in good shape with the regional transportation funding. So final page is the expenditures for the month. Again, just under $800,000 of expenditures. The, again, as we're winding down the school year, a lot of the expenses have been in place. The need for supplies and books and instruction expenses are less at this point in the year. So those are lower. Again, the payroll is a $600,000, which is the normal cycle of payroll. I'd be remiss if I didn't again thank Tricia and Sylvia for their fine job in the office of maintaining the workflow. As some of the teachers will attest, we've had some, you know, again, as I mentioned in the past as well, the move towards technology with the automated time sheets and the payroll systems where there's now a computer when you walk into the business office where, you know, staff members can log on and submit time, especially like bus drivers who don't have access to, you know, workstations in their daily lives. They come in, they submit items and so forth. So we're automating that whole process, which is going rather smoothly. There haven't been many glitches at all. So things are working well. We're also, again, implementing the online purchase order approvals process, so there's a lot less paper flowing through the building, and there's a lot more timely processing of the paperwork as their requisitions are being requested and so forth. So overall, we're doing a fine job. Sylvia and Dersher are as far as processing and getting on board the new technology. So things are going well.
Thanks, Jim. I ask for a motion for the approval of the Treasury report. Motion made by Situit, seconded by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Budget transfers?
Yes, we do have a, we do have a couple little budget transfer this month. We have a little bit of older spending on medical supplies. Again, that's just a need-based number that we need an extra $600 transferred into that line item. And as well, in-state travel for, we need an increase of $3,000. Again, a lot of that reflects the success of the skills program where we're sending 40 students to the state, you know, program as well. And we anticipate with, we have a line item in there usually to cover the national travel as well for the two students that'll be going down to Louisville with the staff and so forth. So we just need a little bit of bump in there to cover some of those expenses that have come in. So overall, we're adding $600 to the medical supplies line item and $3,000 to the in-state travel. We had savings, we identified first of the year with in the workers' comp insurance line item, so we're taking the $3,600 out of the workers' comp.
I ask a motion to approve the budget transfer. Motion made by Hanover, seconded by Situit. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Nothing from the chairman tonight. Move on to the subcommittee. Treasury Report Evaluation Committee. The subcommittee will be meeting prior to our June meeting, and we will include any agenda items in June as usual. Superintendent Director, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brief report tonight. Thank you for all of your hard work. As of our town meetings of May 6th, we've secured seven out of the seven town meetings that took place. And so we now have a budget, an approved budget for fiscal '20. Abington is the final district community that has a town meeting. That will be on the 20th of May. But as of reaching the threshold of six communities, that would give us our approved budget for fiscal '20. I want to thank committee members for attending our general advisory dinner meeting. It was well-attended by our advisors from our various programs. It was very informative as always. I want to say thank you to our administrative staff, our tech support staff, our culinary department, and students for putting together what I thought was probably the best, the best displayed event from the technology to just the layout of the room, and the food was always excellent. For members who weren't able to attend, we put together a nice compendium of all of the minutes of all of the advisory meetings all year, and I'll make sure that committee members get a hard copy of that. It's quite informative, and it's really used as a guide leading into budget planning for fiscal '21 for a lot of items. So I'm, again, thank you for, thank you for that. And I'll also point out that there is a, our annual legislative breakfast is this Friday at 8:30 if you're available. As of earlier today, we have confirmation that all members of our legislative delegation from the House and the Senate will be represented, mostly by the actual elected members themselves. If they run into a scheduling conflict, they've committed to at least having a staff member attend as well. So my intention at that breakfast, as in the past few years, is to provide a brief PowerPoint presentation of some of our goals and challenges, some of the legislative items that are current through the budget process. The Senate's budget is being looked at right now. There are amendments to the Senate budget. But it's important that our delegation hear about what are the needs of vocational schools in the Commonwealth and what is a specific need for us. Of course, we'll talk about our building MSBA needs. It never hurts to raise their awareness about that situation. So that'll be this Friday at 8:30 if you're able to attend. And Mr. Chairman, that's all from my report, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Administrator reports?
Thank you. There's a yellow sheet of paper out if nobody has got it. I just want to, believe it or not, when, next time we meet, school is out, the weekend on June 18th, and we don't meet again until June 19th. So I just want to hit a couple of the highlights for the remaining events of the year and the art flight numbers, and so I'll just hit a couple of them. Beginning tomorrow night, the graphic students and our art students have the art and design show that's happening in here from 6 to 8 o'clock. It's an opportunity to see the students who are the artistic side of our house and what they can bring to the table and what their careers are going to look like themselves. This Saturday, and I know a number of you like to attend, we have our annual freshman orientation for the next class coming in, class of 2023. We'll do three sessions, an eight, a 10, and a 12 session. We'll talk to... We'll talk to the students about what to expect. We'll talk to the parents about building that important relationship with the home. And the students will also be taking a placement test on math and English for their placement into academic courses. June 7th is once again graduation, South Shore Music Circus. If you are planning on attending, please contact Susan Rossi for me so that we have an update of how many people we need and chairs, okay? So make sure that is done. If you just contact and drop a line to Susan, that would be greatly... I've also put in front of you the invitation. Some of you do like to attend. We have the annual retirement party at the end of the year. This is happening on Friday, June 14th. Steve Campbell, who has been employed in the district a long time. Annie Keat, who is in the Social Studies Department. Patty Squires, who's in Allied Health. And the venerable John Creed is retiring at the end of the year. So if you would like to attend, the staff of South Shore Technical invite you. Feel free to, it'll be at Harmon Golf Course in Rockland. And then finally, as I said, the last day of school is June 18th, the Tuesday. So when we see you again, we'll be starting to tear everything down and get ready for next year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I want to make sure that the committee was aware that once again this summer, on July 8th through 12th, we will be running a summer engineering camp focused on robotics, hosted by one of our talented science teachers, Jerry Shaw. And the space is limited for two 20 students. Again, it's July 8th through 12th, it is 8 to noon, $125. And you need to get in there quick. So if you have rising sixth, seventh, or eighth graders in your community who would like to attend that camp, they will find that posted on our website probably in the next 24 hours. Be looking for it. I'll make sure that you get the link as well. So a summer robotics camp. They will be building robots. They will be fighting robots. It seems really awesome.
Awesome. Thank you, Tammy. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Policy, second readings of new and revised. I'm going to read because there was an agenda adjustment. So I'm going to read each one and then we'll take the motion after. For the new policies, we have BEDG minutes. We have EFD male charge policy. We have ID school day. ILD, student submission to education surveys and research. Under revised policies, excuse me, we have AC nondiscrimination. We have GBA, equal employment opportunity. GBGB, staff professional security and safety. GCF, professional staff hiring. GB, equal educational opportunities. JFBB-1, oh, I'm sorry, that was JB, hold on a minute. JFBB-1, school choice. JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use for students prohibited. JJF, student activity accounts. And JRA, student records. So I'll take a motion for all those new and revised policies. Motion made by Cituit.
I'll second that.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? They're in a book. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you. Motion carries. New business. I ask a motion. Yep. Ask a motion to revise. Make the motion by Cituit. Second by Hanover. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I ask a motion to approve the fiscal '20 non-resident vocational tuition rate of $17,032.
Motion.
Motion made by Rockland, second by Hanover. Any discussion?
That is state-regulated, right?
That's correct.
Just so people understand that.
Yeah. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Surplus. Next item is ask a motion to surplus the items listed.
I'll make that motion to...
Motion made by Hanover.
Second.
Second by Novo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Warrants.
Warrants, number 21, 21A, 21B, 22, 22A, 22B, and 22C in the amount of $866,785.81.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Any requests for action? Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion made by Whitman, second by Cituit. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.